Good evening. Let me call to order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council Meeting of January the 5th, 2021. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Powers?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Fire Robin?
Here.
King?
Here.
I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for participating in tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. Please be patient with us this evening as we continue our utilization of an electronic platform for tonight's meeting. As is our practice, there will be an opportunity to speak on matters of city business this evening during two scheduled public hearings and the Appearance of Citizens section of the agenda. Instructions for participating in tonight's meeting is provided on the scrolling message at the bottom of your viewing screen. This evening, I would like to ask Mr. Tim Johnson of Beach Grove United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation. And following our invocation, I would like to ask Councilman Chad King to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Malin. Let us all bear our heads and pray. Lord, we thank you for all the things you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for the things that you've given us that we have no idea about. But we thank you for this group. We pray your blessings upon them. Lord, we thank you most of all for your salvation, for your life, your death, and your resurrection. We ask, Lord, that you bless this country. You bless this country's division and make us one. That you bless this country's virus and this world's virus and make us well and whole. Lord, we thank you for all of these people involved at this meeting. We just ask your blessings upon them. May, Lord, the decisions that be made be made in the best interests of everyone involved. Lord, we ask you to work with us without bias, without personal agendas or preconceived notions. Let us be united and in one accord. Lord, we thank you for all the things you do for us. We thank you in the name of Jesus Christ, who died for us and rose again the third day. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Liberty and justice for... Councilman McKean, I believe the Pledge of Allegiance was broken up there. It, just very little of it came across. He just got a message. He's having internet problems.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go ahead and proceed. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Danielle Smith, City Attorney, to discuss the statutory authority for conducting this meeting by electronics means. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, Governor Lee has suspended the provisions of the Electronic Meetings Act or the Open Meetings Act to the extent necessary to allow city council and other governing bodies to conduct their business by electronic means rather than in person. One condition of meeting electronically is that if a member of city council or staff is attending by audio only with no video, you must identify yourself by name and position when you speak. In order to proceed with meeting electronically, the city council should make a determination that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. If any discussion is necessary, you should have that discussion at this time. Otherwise, if no discussion is necessary, then you should proceed to a motion, second, and a roll call vote.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Tara, would you please call the roll?
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mr. Sore, do you have any items to be added to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I have two items that were late additions due to the timing of receipt of confirmation from Tennessee Department of Transportation regarding a road relocation project with Island Road Northeast. So Resolution 2117 awarding a construction contract and Resolution 2118 awarding an engineering services agreement will be added to the agenda. Due to our process with a late addition such as this, when we come to that point in our agenda, I'll speak to the item on the agenda and then I will read aloud both Resolution 2117 and 2118.
Thank you. We have one proclamation and one presentation on tonight's agenda. This time, we'll do the proclamation. This proclamation designating January 11th, 2021, as Human Trafficking Awareness Day in Bristol, Tennessee. I would like to ask Councilwoman Margaret Fire Robin to read the proclamation following by Ms. Natalie Ivey, Executive Director of Community Coalition Against Human Trafficking, is with us to address counsel about the seriousness of this issue in our state. Ms. Fire Robin?
Thank you. A resolution recognizing Human Trafficking Awareness Day. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern slavery that occurs in every state, including Tennessee, with 180 human trafficking cases reported in Tennessee in 2019. And whereas human trafficking is the second fastest growing criminal industry just behind drug trafficking. And whereas in the United States, on average, every two minutes a child is bought or sold for sex with the average age being 13 years old. And whereas the most common types of human trafficking in the U.S. are sex trafficking, forced labor, and debt bondage, and are part of the larger list, including organ trafficking, forced marriage, forced child labor, and involuntary domestic servitude, along with several other types, and can occur through venues and industries existing in every state such as health and beauty services, bars, traveling sales crew, domestic work, landscaping service, restaurants and food service, pornography, construction, healthcare, recreation, arts and entertainment, commercial cleaning services, and hotels, among others. Whereas to promote the awareness and community education opportunities to unite and equip Bristol to report and respond to this crime, and whereas to foster and celebrate new and existing partnerships that pave the way for increased collaboration, collaborative intervention, and stronger legislation to end human trafficking and protect survivors. And whereas to further an inclusive, community-wide response in which everyone has an important part to play toward ending human trafficking. And whereas in an effort to recognize the dangers of human trafficking in our community, foster hope for survivors, and to honor the resilience, courage, and perseverance of human trafficking survivors in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim January 11th, 2021, as Human Trafficking Awareness Day, aligning with the state of Tennessee and the rest of the nation to remember the victims and survivors of this crime and further our commitment to ending human trafficking in Bristol and communities across the state and nation. Signed today by Mayor Malin Luttrell.
Thank you. Ms. Ivey?
Yes, thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor, for taking time to issue this proclamation today and to recognize this very serious issue. My name is Natalie Ivey. I'm the Executive Director of the Community Coalition Against Human Trafficking. We are a nonprofit organization that serves all of East Tennessee, and we're delighted to have a moment to speak with you this evening because this is an issue that we know firsthand affects Bristol and affects our Upper East Tennessee community. And, you know, we've talked a bit about human trafficking and what that looks like, but one of the things that we see regularly, particularly in our smaller towns in East Tennessee, for the kids who are experiencing trafficking, they're most commonly being trafficked by a family member or a family friend. And this is a crime that is occurring right within our society, our community, and often is happening in plain sight. And it will take an entire community for us to recognize, to become educated, and to respond to this issue to end this very horrific victimization and this cycle of victimization. We've served quite a few survivors in the Upper East, adults and children. And we're always enjoying as we build our partnerships and our community connections in the tri-cities area and expand into that area to provide services to those survivors. On the call, I think here tonight, and I think she's listed as a duplicate Natalie Ivey, but her name's actually Gabby Smith. She is our representative who is housed in the Johnson-Sinney Family Justice Center. And so we have a satellite office there in that area to provide services to the community. And we have, as I mentioned, have served adults and children in the Upper East and in the tri-cities area. And it's so important for us to have community support. If you're from this area and I have family from the tri-cities area, I know it certainly brings true for their experience in those communities. Many times the survivors that we serve who are from this region access our resources, but they tell us, I don't want to leave my town. I don't want to leave my home. This is where I was born and raised, and this is where, you know, I belong. And so it's so important for us to have those community connections so that we can support survivors in that choice and help them grow and thrive in their communities where they deserve to find stable and safe living. So we are so grateful for your time and attention tonight and want to make sure that we share the information and are serving your community in the best way possible and letting us know what that looks like for you and what we can do for your community.
We thank you for all the great work that you and your organization is doing for our communities.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much for having us tonight. And I think Gabby is on. If it's okay, she can put her contact information in the chat box. If anybody needs to access that information or needs our resources, would that be acceptable?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, fantastic. And I hope she's on there. I saw another ghost, Natalie Ivey. So it's either her or my identity's been stolen, so we'll see what happens. Perfect. And thank you so much. If anything else you need from us, we're happy to answer those questions for you. If anybody has any questions about human trafficking in East Tennessee, we're happy to answer that. Otherwise, we'll let you get to your important business.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, Mr. James Benz of the Public Accounting Firm of Maudlin &amp; Jenkins is with us to present the independent auditor's report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. James?
Thank you. Bear with me just a minute as I get the PowerPoint shared here. And so good evening, everyone. My name is James Benz. And I am a partner here with Maudlin &amp; Jenkins. Sorry about the feedback. I'm not sure if that's, I don't think it's on my end, but I've got the presentation here. I've got our auditor's discussion and analysis. I'm going to go through this document. It's our normal document. We go through to kind of summarize the highlights of the audits. I'm not going to read every page to you, but certainly as we go through, if there's any information you'd like me to stop and dive deeper into, or if there's just any generic questions that you'd like to go over as we go through the presentation, certainly, please feel free to jump in and we can discuss those at that time. So again, as a brief, quick overview, Maudlin &amp; Jenkins is a firm that specializes in local government audits. It's an industry that we focus a lot of our firm resources in. It accounts for about 32% of what our firm does. And so we have offices in seven states, serving local governments year-round. And we serve currently about 500 local governments. So in that mix, we've got 11 partners, myself included, who spend all of their time year-round serving local governments. So just as a general background, I know we kind of see you all once a year, but serving local governments is a significant part of our firm and a very important industry that we spend time in. As that, I did serve as the engagement partner this year. I've been with Maudlin &amp; Jenkins now for 18 years. Again, 100% of that time from the start has been working with local governments. All of our audits require two partners to review the audits before they go out. I've served as the engagement partner, and then we have a second partner who's independent of the audit process, who provides our quality control review. That was Adam Frayley this year. And as you can see on Slide 3, he's been with the firm for 25 years. As a side note, he's also our government industry leading, service-leading partner. So all of our partners, and Tara knows this, all of our partners in the firm are always resources to all of our clients. So I do serve as the engagement partner, but at any point in time, anyone at the city ever wanted to reach out and get other information from another partner, we work as a group and we're not independent silo partners. So all of our resources are there, and again, all of our engagements do have two-partner involvement. So as we kind of discussed the June 30, 2020 audit, on Page 4, kind of the highlights and the takeaways, the main question everyone wants to ask, we did give an unmodified opinion this year, which means that the financial statements that is prepared by management were materially correct as presented. And so that's the clean opinion. That's what the city's received in the past, what all local governments are striving to achieve each year. So that is the opinion we issued. Two things to point out on this stage, we conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards. And what that means is we're auditing the financial statements prepared by management in order to give an opinion as to whether or not they're materially correct as presented. And we're not giving absolute assurance that all of the information in the financial statements are 100% correct. The auditing standards generally accepted do require us to audit to materiality, and through that, we do sampling, we do analytics, and we do inquiry, and we do detail testing as well. But again, just emphasize, we don't test 100% of your transactions. We don't audit every transaction at the city. But we did issue our unmodified opinion in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. On Page 5, kind of the good news of the audit is through the audit process, as I mentioned, we do audit the financials in accordance with government auditing standards, which require us to report any material weaknesses that we note in the internal control structure through our audit process, whether it's internal control weaknesses or material adjustments that had to be made to your financial statements. Through the June 30, 2020 audit, we did not have any material weaknesses to report. So I do want to commend the city's management on maintaining the kind of good, clean books for us to come in and do the audit. We also were required to do compliance audits on your federal funding. And so we also issued an audit in accordance with Uniform Guidance on your controls and compliance with two major programs this year. And you'll see we audited the Economic Development Cluster as well as Title I as the two major programs for the city's financials. Both of those received unmodified opinions, and there were no material weaknesses or no non-compliance matters noted in this year's audit. So again, kind of the good glowing review that you want to receive, that's the good news of the audit. Through the audit process on Page 6, a couple of things to talk about. It doesn't always jump out in our opinions, but just to make sure it's clear, we do review the accounting policies as well as the estimates used by management. Through that process, we did not notice any accounting policies or estimates which were outside of the norm for a government of your size. We did review those, and we did concur with the estimates that management was using. And again, the accounting policies in place at the city are industry norm. So two items to kind of consider that we do review, but don't necessarily jump off the page when you're looking at the audit opinions. On Page 8, one of the items that I do always want to stress, and especially this year, some of the new standards coming from the government auditing standards really emphasized on independence. So I always want to make sure it's clear and understood that we are the external auditors. We audit the financial statements prepared by management, but all of the information, all of the numbers included in the financial statements are the responsibility of the city's management team. And so Tara and her team, and Becky and her team at the schools, they provide all the information, and we conduct the audit on that information. So again, we're external. We're independent of the decision-making process, but we do come in to conduct the audit for this. Page 9, and I think the next two pages have some financial trends and some financial data that we pulled out of the CAFER. Just some highlights typically when people are wanting to know whether it be governing boards, city councils, or external bodies. When they want to know how things went for the year, the number one place they generally will look is your general fund's fund balance. And so we've got here kind of a snippet of the five-year trend of your general fund and how the fund balance has behaved. You'll see left to right, we've got 2020 going back to 2016. And one of the numbers most people are going to look at is your unassigned fund balance and how that compares to your annual operating expenditures of the general fund, which is kind of the big gold or yellow bar that you see on the graph. Out to the side, you'll see the city's kind of hovered around 59, 60% for the past several years of your unassigned fund balance, meaning your resources available for future use, equating to about 50% or 60% of your annual needs for the general fund. Typical benchmark, if you want to try to compare, GFOA recommends you have about three to four months of reserves in there. And so you'll see you've met that requirement. That's generally the benchmark a lot of governments will kind of set themselves against. On Page 10 is kind of a very 10,000 feet up in the air highlight of the budget for this year and how we compare it to the budget. So we've got your original column is your budget as adopted. Again, very high level, looking at revenues, expenditures, and then the ins and outs of the transfers compared to our final, that middle column is our final actual numbers. And then the final column is our final difference between those columns. So I know that the wording can get a little confusing there, but you'll see our revenues came in about 3% below with what we budgeted for the year. And again, this is looking at your general fund. But on the other side of that, our expenditures for the year came in about 4% under the budgeted amount. So in the end, we, the adopted budget plan to use about $533,000 of fund balance, and we only ended up using about $347,000 of the fund balance. So we ended up using less than anticipated through no major swings, but some departmental costs coming in and expenditures being lower than budget as we kind of monitored the revenues coming in for the year. Pages 11 and 12, when you deal with your proprietary funds, a lot of places, because you don't have fund balance in government accounting standards, we don't have the fund balance for proprietary funds. So for those funds, the cash flows is typically where someone's going to look to see how your proprietary operations are going. And so I've got the cash flow statement snippets in here. You can see from operating activities, all three of our major proprietary funds were able to generate positive cash flows from operations. What that allows you to do is then use those funds to not only reinvest in the various systems, but also to provide other non-capital-related activities. And so if you'll note, you know, kind of the cash flows from operations are 17 million, 2 million, and about 175,000. Going to the next page, the place you like to see those cash flows go is back into the system. And so your top category is your cash flows from capital-related financing activities. And that's where we're reinvesting in purchasing or constructing capital assets or paying on the debt that we've previously issued to finance those capital assets. And so you'll see each of those had cash flows being used for that purpose, which again, when you're an external party looking at how the cash flows came from operations, you want to see those going back into the system. With that, there were three, what we call, management recommendations. Again, they don't raise to the level of being reported as any kind of deficiency in the control structure, excuse me, but they're items and opportunities for improvement in the operations. We've met with management and gone over these. They're not material to the financial statements, but they're areas where we felt that improvements could be made going forward. So we've got three items there. Again, you know, if there's any specific questions on them, we can certainly go into them, but they're items that we've talked to management. We've worked out processes to ensure that we address these going forward. And again, they're kind of what we just call our management recommendations. With that, the last several pages here, certainly if you have any trouble sleeping, we like to joke that this is good bedtime reading. GASB, who is the accounting setting standards body for governments, has been very busy over the past couple of years, and there's about ten to twelve new standards coming out, which will be applicable over the next several years. Starting with GASB statement number eighty-seven, I'm not going to dive into all of these, but I will just say, because of the pandemic, GASB did issue statement number ninety-five, which essentially deferred implementation for twelve months for all of the standards. So while some of them would have been applicable in twenty twenty, and some of them would have been applicable next year, all of them did get a one-year deferral because of the pandemic out there. So we do work with management. We want to make sure all of our clients are aware of the new state standards as they come out. But we always give this information to the governing bodies. Obviously, things that may or may not be applicable now could change over time as you all make your decisions. So we want to make sure you have the information. But again, you'll rely on management, and we'll work with management to make sure that they're properly implemented. So with that, that's all the information I have for tonight. Certainly with any questions, or if anyone has anything they'd like to discuss, I'd be happy to discuss with you.
Any questions? Okay. James, we certainly appreciate all that you guys are doing. Always good to see you at our meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, public hearings. We have two public hearings on tonight's agenda. The public hearing is hereby open to receive public comment on proposed amendments to section three oh nine, RE District of the city's zoning ordinance. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
You're muted.
Muted, Bill.
I am sorry, apologize. Section three oh nine of our zoning ordinance deals with the RE district or established residential district. This is the newest of the residential districts within our zoning ordinance and was developed in two thousand and nine. Staff has noticed in the past, in two thousand and twenty, and probably prior to that, in administering the wording that's included in a permitted uses within the RE district, it is noted, they've noted that there is ambiguity and a lack of clarity in some of the text related to the RE district. So with that in mind, staff and the planning commission has worked over the last several months to reduce the level of ambiguity and look at some of the permitted uses within the RE district. And this was brought back to you, it comes out of the planning commission from their December meeting, or excuse me, their November meeting, it was considered on first reading by city council at your December first meeting, and now it's before you this evening for consideration on second reading later this, later in this meeting. Sheriff Young is with us at the present, our planning services manager. She's going to detail the proposed amendments to section three oh nine. Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Good evening, city council. I know we've gone through this one a couple of times already, so I'm going to be briefing my comments and look at this summary slide, and then I've got a few following slides that have the capture of all of the changes for this RE ordinance. I'll point out just the big, more substantial changes, and then certainly be able to be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. So as Mr. Sora stated, we have had some ambiguity, some vagueness in this ordinance that we really took time to clean up and edit to make it as clear as possible. So the changes that are on the screen in front of you are all geared to address some of those ambiguous things. So we did clean up, changed the purpose statement in the ordinance. We did allow public parks by right in the district. We removed private golf, swimming, tennis, and other sports clubs as an option with special use permit. We defined, clearly defined, the residential front facade as the facade that faces a public street. We added the requirement that the front facade shall have an entryway, but the entryway does not have to be the main entrance to the home. We require a build-to range now in this ordinance for the front facade instead of a setback. And I'll show you a diagram in just a second that shows, illustrates that point. We clarified the building height section. We removed the location restrictions for driveways and parking on the property. And then we added finally, an allowance for existing structures which don't comply with the ordinance, with the regulations right now. They can be reconstructed within the same footprint if they're removed, if they are done so within a certain time period. So that's the summary of the changes that are included in the draft ordinance you have for you. And I'll just go quickly through these slides. And again, I won't read every line or discuss every letter item, but just point out those more substantial changes. So in section A, we really just cleaned up the purpose statement, so it's very clear, it's very concise. It's not wordy, it's not vague. In section B, you'll see the addition to number three of public parks as a permitted use now in this district. In section C, there was a use for essentially a private sports club that has been removed in the proposed draft. We can go to the next slide, and I'll direct your attention to number two, which is down towards the bottom half of the page or the slide. This is, section two talks about the residential orientation pattern. So this is where we took a lot of time to define what that residential front facade is. It's the facade that faces the public street, and each front facade shall have an entryway. Item B, under number two, addresses this for the situation where you have a corner lot. Number three is probably the more substantial change in this proposal, and it talks about building placement regulations. So this is just a little bit of a different way of defining the front setback, as we typically call it for a structure. So three A sets forth the language to govern the building placement of the front facade. But if you'll look at the next slide, the illustration, I think, sums it up a little bit better. So this diagram shows a situation where if you have a vacant internal lot, that your front build-to range is going to be defined by those structures on either side of you. So you can build as close to the street as the closest existing residential structure. And then you can build back, your front facade, your front wall can be as far back as the existing residential structure that is the furthest back from the street. So you would have the flexibility to build anywhere in that range. So this is the example for a front build-to, front yard build-to range for an internal lot. Item B at the bottom of the screen addresses corner lots. But again, we have a diagram that hopefully will be most helpful in defining what that build-to or building placement range is. So this is a diagram that shows the corner lot. So this one's going to say that you can build back with a five-foot front yard deviation from the existing structure closest to you. So there's a range there of five feet if you are on the corner lot. Okay, on the next screen, we actually don't really have any changes here in the very top of the screen. But if you'll look at item E, this is the section that's going to address existing structures. If they do not comply with the regulations, but they're existing as of the date of the passage of this ordinance, should you all vote to approve it, then they would be allowed to rebuild within the same footprint if a building permit was issued for the replacement structure within two years. So it gives a little protection to the structures that exist as of today, that they can be rebuilt within that two-year period. And then finally, this chart is the conclusion of our chapter three, which includes all of the setbacks, lot space requirements, building height requirements for all the residential districts. So this is the RE district, we just cleaned up this chart just to make sure it reflects everything that's included in the screens that we just discussed. And with that, as Mr. Sora stated, the planning commission did review this for several months and made their recommendation in November for the approval of this ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions about any of those sections. Any questions that you all might have?
Okay. Hearing none. Sheriff, thank you for the explanation of this issue. Would anyone in the audience like to address counts on this matter? If so, please follow the directions scrolling at the bottom of your viewing screen. See, and none, this public hearing is hereby closed. Next, we'll move on to ordinance twenty-nine nineteen. The public hearing is hereby open to receive public comment on the proposed amendment for the city's zoning map as relates to property located at eight thirty-seven Hill Street. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Sir, I'd be glad to. This is an owner-initiated request for rezoning of property located at eight thirty-seven Hill Street. The property is comprised of point one eight acres and is owned by Wallace Properties Management Group, LLC. The property is currently zoned RE, established residential. And the owner requests the property be rezoned to B one A, limited business and institutional. Currently, there's a residential structure located on the parcel. If the rezoning request is approved, the structure will be demolished, and the parcel will be incorporated in the existing inventory lot located at Hill Street and Knight Street and serviced the Wallace Mitsubishi Subaru Volkswagen dealership. The rezoning request was considered by the planning commission during the November sixteenth meeting and received a favorable recommendation. The item will occur for second reading on your agenda later on this evening. Sheriff is going to provide you information regarding to, and for the public, regarding the permitted uses in the proposed rezoned district of B one A. Sheriff?
Thank you. So I'll begin with the location map here that shows the parcel located at eight thirty-seven Hill Street. So that is outlined in red. Then my next map is going to show the zoning of the area. So everything in a red is the B one A district, which is what their request is to rezone tonight. Everything in yellow is the RE district or the established residential district. And then everything in blue or fleish gray is the B three or general business district, which runs up and down Volunteer Parkway. The next slide shows a photo of the existing home. So this is looking at the house from Hill Street. And then the next slide shows, excuse me, the rear of the structure. And so this is standing in the alley looking at the rear of the structure in question. This table shows the surrounding zoning and the existing land use of parcels in the area. So again, currently, the subject parcel is zoned RE or established residential. It's currently a residential home. To the north, you have the B three general business district and a property that's utilized for commercial use. To the south and east, you have the RE, established residential zone, properties are used residentially. And then to the west, you have the B one A, limited business zone, which you have a commercial use there. It is actually a parking lot currently today. My next slide shows, the next two slides show the permitted uses and special use permit uses in each district. So in RE, the permitted uses are the single-family dwelling unit and duplex dwelling unit. Special use permit items include public or private utility buildings, churches, daycare centers, hospitals, philanthropic institutions or clubs, and then the private sports clubs. The B one A permitted use list includes uses, some services that support the neighborhood. So the B one A district allows single-family homes and duplexes, but it also allows some limited retail trade businesses, some finance and insurance, professional office-type buildings, limited healthcare and social assistance, does allow full-service restaurants, limited personal laundry services, and then parking lots are a permitted use in this district. Special use permit list is going to be the exact same as the RE district. So the same uses that would request, require a special use permit in RE are also going to require special use in the B one A district. This map shows an excerpt from the city's future land use plan. So you can see really two colors, two shaded areas in this, on this map. On the left side of the map, you'll have a purple that suggests or identifies this land use classification for a medium-density residential classification. To the right, you have the commercial designation. So those are properties up and down Volunteer Parkway and some of the homes up to the parcel in question, which is the majority of commercial designation. But there is some medium-density residential on this property as well. For public notification, we did place signs on this property to announce the time, date, and location of the meeting. We did notify adjacent property owners by letter to let them know of the meeting dates. And we also included a comment form for them to mail back to us what they, what they think or if they had any questions on the proposed rezoning. We did receive two comment letters. Both were in favor of the rezoning request. We received one telephone call, actually, we received one today, so that's a total of two telephone calls. Simply an inquiry, no expression of support or objection, but just questioning what the, what the request was. The recommendation that staff provided to planning commission was due to the B one A zoning on the adjacent parcel and then agreement with the future land use plan and policy. The staff recommendation was for the approval of the rezoning. The planning commission heard this item on November sixteenth, and at that meeting voted unanimously to forward a positive, favorable recommendation to city council for this request. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Hearing none, would anyone in the audience like to address the council on this matter? If so, please follow the directions scrolling at the bottom of your viewing screen. See, and none, this public hearing is hereby closed. Next, we'll move on to appearance of citizens. This brings us to the appearance of the citizen section of our agenda. This section provides an opportunity for the public to This section provides an opportunity for the public to address city council. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. The response will not likely be made at this time since in most cases, neither the city council or the city manager would be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to city council or as appropriate, have staff to meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to select spokesperson to represent them. If you would like to participate at this evening's appearance of citizens section of the agenda, please follow the instructions scrolling at the bottom of your viewing screen. Next item on our agenda is appointments. We have two appointments to the library board to be considered this evening. The appointments will serve a three year term ending December 31st, 2023. The candidates are Ms. Ann Rife and Ms. Allison Rutherford. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
I'd be happy to speak on behalf of each of the candidates that they currently serve on our library board. Both are very valuable members. And they're also passionate about our library and about reading and library services in general. And Rife has achieved her certification for a library trustee, which is offered by our secretary of state Trey Hargit. And it's quite rigorous to go through it. And the whole board, all the board members are encouraged to to become certified. Allison Rutherford has served in the past as in our school system as a librarian and is particularly interested in our children's department at our library. She comes with many skills and interests with her background, her work, her degrees. And she also currently is serving as secretary to the board. So both excellent members of our library that we are so very proud of.
I'll concur with, I've served with both of them for a year while I was on the library board. So those both do a great job.
Yeah.
There's no question, both these ladies are very well qualified and we really appreciate you wanting to continue serving in those roles are very valuable to our community and we thank you. Okay, anyone else? Mr. Sora, I think what we'll do is just vote for both at the same time or?
That would be correct. I think as as Miss Music calls your name, if you could indicate one or both the individuals that you want to support for this nomination, since we do have two appointments. Just call out their names as as Miss Music conducts the roll call.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I believe we're ready to vote. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Powers?
Ann Rife and Allison Rutherford.
Luttrell?
Ms. Ann Rife and Ms. Allison Rutherford.
Turner?
Ms. Ann Rife and Ms. Allison Rutherford.
Fire Robin?
Ann Rife and Allison Rutherford.
King?
Ann Rife and Allison Rutherford. Thank you. Next, we have two ordinances for consideration on second reading and six resolutions on tonight's agenda. First item is the second reading of ordinance 20-18 amending the city's zoning ordinance as it relates to amendments to section 309 RE district. Staff summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have a question for the staff? Hearing none, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to take action on ordinance number 20-18.
Second. Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 20-18?
I'll just servant on the planning commission and say that our development services staff, planning services have really worked hard on this. And also our planning commission has to be very thoughtful. And this and some other things that we've been taking on to look at to really make sure that our ordinances and our guidance for our citizens, for our developers, et cetera, are as clear as they can be, as user friendly as they can be and as unambiguous as possible, which you never know how ambiguous something is until it is. So we do the best we can. And I think with this, it's a lot of work went into it and hopefully improves it greatly.
I'd also like to commend staff. You know, our planning commission does a great job, but I believe that it's because of the education and the guidance that staff provides and and their professionalism and trying to to work through all of these different planning opportunities with our planning commission. So great job to our planning staff.
Anyone else? Okay, the public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing. So I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is the second reading of ordinance 20-19 amending the city zoning map for property located at 837 Hill Street. Staff summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have a question for staff?
So I have a question. When this first came to us, was Wallace the owner or it was the the homeowner that brought it originally? I forgot.
The application was filed by Wallace.
Okay.
It's an owner, owner initiated.
Right, but also I believe the owner of the house initiated, they were, they wished for this to occur as well. Ms. Young is shaking her head. Yes, that's correct.
Right.
Well, I think it sounds a great match. You know, you've got a business owner and a property owner that have fallen into agreement rather easily. And it allows for the expansion of the business and the prior owner, I'm sure was 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 very supportive. So I think it's a great match when you've got cooperation from both entities.
Okay, any more questions or dialogue?
Are we discussing?
Or discussing?
Yeah, I think we're a little out of order, but I'll just say I support this with that caveat that Ms. Powers explained. I do think that that block has some nice homes. And I know that our comprehensive plan, our land use plan shows it as going more toward business. But I'm hopeful that the integrity of some of the homes that are still there will continue.
Well, I will say this, a home located very close to to this, this particular location most recently sold at a very, very good price. And there has been ongoing renovation and development of and renovation of several of the homes in the immediate area. I wouldn't necessarily say that it's attributable to this, but Margaret, to your point, I think that this area is beginning to show some, some new life through renovation. So good news for the area.
Any more discussion? Is there a motion to take action on this item? Motion to approve ordinance 20-19.
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 20-19?
Further.
Further, yeah. Okay, hearing none. The public had an opportunity to comment on this section or excuse me, this issue during the public hearing. So I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin? Pardon, Fire Robin?
Yes.
And King?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Next, we have resolution 21-1 amending the fiscal 2021 appropriation agreement with Believe in Bristol. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, mayor, as you indicated, resolution 21-1 does provide an amendment to the current or the existing appropriation agreement to Believe in Bristol, a nonprofit organization, serving our downtown community. As council has discussed, both at the last business meeting on December 1st, as well as during the work session on December 15th, there's a recognition that our food and beverage business has suffered and perhaps suffered disproportionately. So in regards to in business sector within our community as a result of the pandemic. In in looking at trying to trying to explore different creative ideas that might help offset some of the, some of the, some of the financial impact of the of the pandemic. Staff worked with with Believe in Bristol staff to consider different alternatives. One was to provide equipment and outdoor spaces for outdoor dining opportunities as the weather, as as spring weather arrives and and it becomes a little more, more mild for outdoor dining opportunities. That quickly shifted to a grant opportunity that some other communities have have utilized that will allow restaurants, not only in our downtown, but also throughout the city of Bristol, Tennessee, to take advantage of this grant opportunity to secure outdoor equipment that might facilitate outdoor dining at their restaurants. This matter was discussed by Maggie Elliott with her Believe in Bristol board early this morning and received a favorable response from her board. At this time, I'm going to ask Maggie and or Terry Napier to comment about the details of the grant program and where they see this benefiting our city as a whole. Maggie?
Yes, thank you for having me this evening. We have established some program guidelines for this grant application. We will be offering one-time mini grants up to $5,000 per business to help Bristol, Tennessee food and bread, food and beverage businesses with cost to expand outdoor dining in 2021. We did upon discussion from the work session in December, changed it from restaurants to food and beverage establishments to include some of the breweries, especially that we have downtown, to be able to partake in this grant opportunity. So this program intends to support the economic sustainability of Bristol, Tennessee locally owned restaurants and to preserve jobs. There are three eligible equipment grant tiers. The first tier includes supplies such as tables, umbrellas and chairs. That tier is up to $1,000 in assistance to businesses. Tier two is tents and heaters up to $2,500 for that tier. And then the third is the greenhouse and igloo installations, which go up to $5,000, which is obviously our highest tier. All of those grant applications will require a site plan and permissions upon application. We want to make sure obviously if they are applying for tents, if those tents are going to be on public property, they have the appropriate cafe permits and what have you. Um, so upon successful completion of their application, the applications will be reviewed by first come, first served basis recommended by the BIB Economic Vitality Committee. And then the final vote will be done by the Believe in Bristol Executive Committee. So it is our plan to open up these applications upon approval this evening on Monday, this upcoming Monday, and have them open for two weeks and closing on Friday, January 22nd. So we are able to get this program open quickly. Upon closing those funds, if if any funds remain after that initial application period, we will have a second round of applications that will be open February 1st. I do have a outline of our timeline in between the 22nd of January and February 1st. So those are some of the basics, our eligibility requirements. Believe in Bristol Rural Award Grant Funds only to food and beverage businesses within the city limits of Bristol, Tennessee. At this time, Bristol applicants must be a legal business entity and show proof of Secretary of State registration or business identification number, business license, what have you, whatever proof they have. Have 50 or fewer full-time equivalent employee, full-time employees. So that would mean that two part-time employees would equal one full-time employee in this case is what that means. They must have experienced financial hardship due to COVID-19 and most show a minimum of 25% decline in revenue. We will accept any comparison for any quarter in the years 2019 and 2020 to show that decline in revenue. And then they must be in compliance with the Tennessee Pledge Guidelines, the Sullivan County, Tennessee Executive Orders and Sullivan County, Tennessee Health Department recommendations. Should those businesses be found out out of compliance, they do risk forfeiting or returning their award to Believe in Bristol. There are some additional eligibility fine print as far as franchise businesses that are corporately owned will not be eligible for the award. However, franchises that are independently owned and operated businesses registered within the state of Tennessee are eligible upon obvious other program requirements there. So we do have some additional timeline information. Deadline for submission be January 22nd. Applications reviewed the 25th through the 27th. That following week would be that Monday through Wednesday by our Economic Vitality Committee. They would send their recommendations over for our executive committee to vote on that Friday, January 29th. And we can notify the grant winners at that time with the announcement and perhaps next round announcement for that following Monday on February 1st. So that is our, that is our timeline. We do have our program guidelines wrapped up in our application. It is a very simple application, business information. That includes obviously how many employees they have. If there are any amendments to their current business hours, if they have received any additional COVID related support, if they've, what they've applied for as well as what they have actually received. And then obviously marking which tier they would, they are applying for. And if they're applying for the full amount, if not the full amount, how much they are requesting. There are two long form questions. The first is what is their need for grant assistance? And to provide some specific ways the pandemic has affected their business. I don't think that would be too difficult for our businesses to be able to fill in those lines. And then the most important And then um the most important piece is how they intend to utilize the grant funding to accommodate the need for outdoor dining during the pandemic. Um, so that for that, they would need to indicate their anticipated expenses. Um, uh, equipment quantity, site plan, uh, just a simple rendering, a sketch um is allowed and recommended. And then obviously um property permissions as well. So like I said, if they, if any of this equipment is going to be placed on um, not their property, um, we want to make sure that they have the appropriate permissions uh before we are able to award them these grant funds. Um, I know I went through that very quickly. Um, but I know that time is of the essence for this project. Um, so that is where we are. Um, I was not, I have been able to speak with um a few restaurants, um at least in our downtown district. Um, all are in favor of whatever assistance that they can get at this point. Um, but I I was not able to get to as many restaurants as possible. So that is another reason for me hoping to be able to um delay this if council approves um to open up applications on Monday, so I can get a few more um conversations and in the meantime. And I guess I'll open up for any other questions that council might have.
Maggie, I've just got a couple of, so who is going to, uh, I know the the grant is very specific, what they can use it for. Who's going to be going, following up that they actually use that money for, and how is that gonna happen of that they use the money for what the grant was given for? Who's who's gonna handle that and make sure that it is? And I guess the other question is, you know, in the event they're given the grant and they buy the equipment, is there any timeframe of the as far as of that? Say they went out of business a month later, that that equipment, I know we talked about this, these were some questions that came out of the work session. So how has that been?
Absolutely. So great questions. Um, the first one, the um, the grant will be a reimbursable grant, so they will have to show that um receipts for um the tables and chairs, tents, et cetera, that they have purchased. Um, if if it's a little bit outside of what their initial description are, you know, if they, in instead of getting um tables and chairs, they were able to get a tent and got the permissions and we were able to work with them through that, that's, you know, one thing, but um we would want to make sure that um they're being reimbursed for outdoor dining specific uses. Um, the second piece, um, and we, that is addressed in our um in our eligibility requirements. Um, so, so sorry, um, funds must be exhausted by the recipient and purchase equipment placed within into use within ninety days of being awarded or subject to returning funds and materials to Believe in Bristol. Um, so we did, we did place that piece in there so that if unfortunate reasons people were to close, um, those materials could be recovered through this grant program. Um, also obviously want our legal team to be able to look at this to make sure that some of those um bigger items and bigger concerns um are addressed properly to protect us in that manner.
Great.
And there's also a requirement for them to file a report on what they did and the outcome.
Correct, yes. Um, they must, business owners must provide summary of their results. Um, uh, six months of receipt of the grant.
Great, okay. Sounds good.
Um, some of the, one of the other additional items that um I didn't address but thought necessary uh for council to know, we did address the following types of businesses that do not qualify for assistance at this time. So any government, if they have a food or food or beverage-based um business tied in, government agencies, home-based businesses, churches, businesses not open regular hours to the public, um, and then mobile food vendors. So no food trucks or carts at this time.
Maggie, how would you define the the normal hours?
Um, I would say by appointment only, that's not necessarily, um, that's not defeating um the mission or accomplishing the mission of this program. We want our our restaurants to be able to um provide a bigger need for our community as far as outdoor dining and more opportunities to to serve the community and keep their doors open. Um, and if they don't have their door open to start with, but that can be amended.
Okay, is any member of council having question for staff? Hearing none, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve uh resolution twenty-one dash one.
Second.
Would any member like, any member of council like to discuss resolution twenty-one dash one?
I just want to thank uh thank our city staff and the effort that Believe in Bristol is making towards this. Uh, well-needed within our uh within this sector of our business society. Um, you know, there are other things that can be considered later on that may be uh pertinent to the COVID uh situation, for instance, ventilation within side of the uh restaurants. But I think this is a great start, and uh we'll see where it goes over the next thirty days and and go from there.
I I agree, Chad, and also think it'll be interesting to see how many people want to take advantage of it, and that if we have a a very large number that um we want to keep looking at it and see what what might be appropriate.
Anything else? Okay, I believe we're ready to take a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash two, approving an amendment to the City of Bristol Redevelopment Plan by creating the Volunteer Parkway South Redevelopment District. Mr. Sore, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
As mayor, as councils aware, over the past probably eight months, um, uh, efforts have been made to identify potential incentives that would uh drive forward residential development within our city limits. Uh, council has has approved a number of measures that will do that, and this is uh one of the, one of the last that that uh that staff proposed for consideration. And this is amendment to our uh Bristol Redevelopment Plan, which was originally adopted in two thousand and five. Uh, the original redevelopment areas, which in the, what what is significant here is that a redevelopment area is eligible for tax increment financing for projects that meet the the criteria for eligibility. Uh, and initially, uh, the city has has looked at redevelopment areas strictly from a commercial redevelopment perspective, and not so much from the residential side. So there are three areas uh that were under consideration in the original redevelopment plan. They were identified as as potential use for residential uh development. Uh, again, in two thousand and five, there was no action taken on these sites, but consistent with the the desire of council to explore every opportunity uh to incentivize residential development, we brought this issue uh around for council consideration. So we have two resolutions on tonight, uh, tonight's agenda dealing with redevelopment districts. The first is residential twenty-one dash two, and it creates the Volunteer Parkway South Redevelopment District. As an initial step, the Bristol Housing Authority has already uh approved this, and that's, that's is for the first step in the process. They've conducted uh their public hearing and have and have approved um the Volunteer Parkway South Redevelopment District. So next in that process is for city council uh to make a similar designation. The uh, the development, uh, this redevelopment district has functioned historically as a mixed-use development uh supporting a blend of race-related uh land uses such as uh retail vendors and campgrounds, as well as multifamily residential developments. The also area also contains uh properties that are either vacant or underutilized or not consistent with the highest uh use of the property. We've had a a really good team of uh of Tom Anderson uh with our Economic Development Team, as well as as Steve Seifers and Joel Conkin with the Housing Authority. Uh, Joel has served uh as as really our uh our guru with uh tax increment financing and redevelopment districts now for a number of years. He is with us tonight, and he's going to further detail uh resolution twenty-one da- uh dash two. Joel?
Oh, uh, thank you. I appreciate the chance to be here tonight. Um, I won't take long, and I I'll probably, I think it makes sense to address these two resolutions really together because they are in essence similar concepts. So the Volunteer Parkway South is a new district. Um, and by declaring that a district, we are not approving any TIF financing for any specific project tonight. Uh, we're just making that area eligible for future uh redevelopment tools that are available through the TIF statute, and obviously primarily tax increment financing is 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 the number one tool by far. So uh, the maps, I'm sure you've seen. Uh, so, but this resolution in essence declares that these properties are redevelopment districts. They meet the statutory definitions uh required to declare them redevelopment districts and and make them eligible in the future for tax increment financing should a developer bring forward a project in the boundaries of these districts.
Joel, would you like to go ahead? I I think it's a good idea to go ahead and and cover these uh at the same time since they are, they are are related to the same type of uh of action. If you'd like to go ahead and cover resolution twenty-one dash three and then count, then then open up the floor for questions from council.
Sure. Well, as I said, the uh twenty-one dash three is the Hillside Borough Road Redevelopment District. And really what I just said about the Volunteer Parkway South Redevelopment District applies uh equally to the Hillside Borough Road District. In essence, that we're making this area also uh by declaring it a redevelopment district, we're indicating that it meets the statutory definitions and and requirements to be declared a redevelopment district, and that it is now eligible for the tools that the redevelopment statute make available for for these districts, and again, primarily TIF. Uh, so the maps, I think, are the key uh to these to these districts. So you should have those in front of you as far as laying out the specific boundaries for each district. And um, that's really, I think, the key points for these. Do you have any questions?
Mayor, when we formally consider these, we will need to, while the discussion has been collective, we need, we will need to have a motion and a vote on each of these individually.
For sure, yes. I agree with that.
Okay, does any member of council have any additional questions or have any questions on either district? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to take action on this item, resolution twenty-one dash two?
Motion to approve twenty-one dash two for the uh South uh uh Volunteer Parkway South Redevelopment District.
One second.
Any additional discussion?
Um, I'll just say on both of these, um, particularly this one, we've talked about doing um development around this area, trying to encourage it, and this is a way to do that and to um have the best possible uses. Also, I know we were really excited about um this one, but particularly when we get to the um Hills and Buhr Road ones that um the mixed-use um concept and for staff that worked on the areas that we ask them to to look at. Um, so I think this is a move in the right direction. I think it's pretty exciting. So thanks to everybody who worked on it.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Tara, believe we're ready to vote on resolution twenty-one dash two.
Okay, Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Okay, next we'll move on to resolution twenty-one dash three. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve um uh twenty-one dash three um Hillside and Buhr Road Redevelopment District.
Second.
Any any discussion on twenty-one dash three? Hearing none, I believe we're ready to take a vote, Tara.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash four, authorizing entry into a professional services agreement for the development of the Bristol is Ready marketing campaign. Mr. Sore, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
As mayor, a couple of months ago, I I believe um city council asked staff to take a look at a marketing plan that uh that could be developed in conjunction with BTS that would would uh market or and showcase our our area, specifically Bristol, Tennessee, as a desirable community, uh especially in this telecommuting environment that we founder in and and that found ourselves in the recent, in recent months. We have a beautiful outdoor recreation here uh uh environment around us and and and, but we also have uh an exciting technology uh based infrastructure here that that would support telecommuting and and that type of 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 work within our community very easily. Uh, and as 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 we hear of individuals uh seeking to to migrate from more densely populated urban areas to um to less congested urban areas, Bristol's certainly a a prime candidate to uh to attract that type of individual. So with that, uh, our community relations staff has worked very hard in conjunction with um our BTS partners uh and also High Road um uh marketing from Kingsport to develop a plan. Uh, this evening, uh, Malin Lut- uh, not Malin, but John Luttrell will uh will will discuss that plan for you, our Director of Community Relations. And then also talk about uh a proposed agreement that resolution twenty-one dash four supports uh that will engage the services of of High Road's marketing to um to to fulfill the balance of this marketing uh effort. So with that, uh, John's gonna going to um uh gi- give you a video, give you a program overview, and then we can talk about the financing of the project. John?
Thank you, Mr. Sore and and members of council. Um, yeah, at at your two most recent work sessions, we have discussed the development of that campaign designed to leverage the funds that had been previously designated for tourism marketing, marketing activities and redirecting them to showcase those community assets, not the least of which is the available ten-gig fiber network from BTS. The the goal being to spur population growth in Bristol with a focus on on enticing those professionals who find themselves in long-term or perhaps even permanent telework situations as a result of the pandemic um to consider Bristol as as their new home base um with a a new lower cost but higher quality of life alternative to more urban environments. Uh, specifically, a desire was expressed to explore the utilization of television advertising in some of the larger markets within the southeastern U.S. Um, in examining possible messaging for this campaign, it was felt that we would be best to deploy our existing branding, the the Bristol is concept that we've been using for several years now in a very intentional manner to reinvigorate it and and really put it to work telling our story. The focus of the messaging should center on connectivity, opportunity, and community livability. There has to be an emotional reaction and connection to the brand that's certainly critical, um as is a clear call to action. In considering partners to help facilitate the the ad buys in the target markets, we turn to the High Road Agency with whom the city and BTS have actually we turn to the High Road Agency with whom the city and BTS have actually been working over roughly the past two years, promoting the availability of our 10 gig internet capability as well as some of our tourism and quality of life assets. In fact, April Eads from BTS and I had been engaged in planning for a number of expanded marketing activities in this vein in the first weeks of 2020, just before the outset of the pandemic, which unfortunately did necessitate a bit of a pause in our planning. Our primary contacts at High Road, you all know Matt Bolis and Lori Worley. They're intimately familiar with our community and beyond their professionalism, they want to help tell our story well on a personal level. As such, we asked them to prepare a proposal for how these new funds might be best deployed to meet the objectives expressed by council. The first element of their proposal was the purchase of TV ad space in the Nashville and Atlanta metro markets. In Nashville, broadcast spots will be secured through WKRN, the local ABC affiliate. In Atlanta, the spots would be secured through Fox Five. In both of those markets, the ad flight would consist of 20 to 30, 30-second spots, depending on the availability of airtime. These will also be supplemented by an additional 30 to 50 spots through cable TV providers in those markets with a focus on cable news and business networks that might be of most interest to our target demographic. The schedule will run from approximately January 15th, so that's really the end of next week, through April 30th and should earn an estimated 5.75 million total ad impressions between those two markets during that time. The total investment for these ad placements comes to 52,000. The next prong of the proposal is a digital marketing effort that would pick up mid-March and run through mid-May in these same markets with the intent of reinforcing the prior TV messaging and taking an even more targeted approach to sharing the message. On social media, there would be multiple ad sets that focus on topics like teleworking, educational opportunities, and quality of life in Bristol, in addition to the same video ad that had been shown on TV. This should garner just under 2 million additional estimated impressions. Additionally, programmatic video ad placements would be inserted into a number of different online content sources and would be displayed in a variety of manners. This type of ad inventory is highly sought after and available in pretty limited quantities, but it is estimated that these video ads should net about 112,000 additional impressions as well. So the digital arm of the campaign is proposed at an additional investment of about 22,500. With all that said, we move into the call to action for these ads. All of the ads would redirect to a new portal-style microsite. So a standalone website that doesn't exist within the confines of the city's existing site or BTS's existing site. It would be a dedicated site for this type of marketing activity. Certainly, in this day and age, you have to have a responsive design that makes it appropriate for viewing on desktop or mobile devices. But the elements in this site would include, of course, information on BTS and their fiber capabilities, the quality of life that we enjoy here in Bristol, relocation resources when folks do make the decision to perhaps call Bristol their new home, the opportunities for education, and links to other economic development resources that already exist here in our region. One of the benefits of having this standalone online platform is it gives us greater flexibility for some search engine optimization and analytics to know exactly where the traffic to this site is coming from, whereas we're a little bit limited with our larger city website or BTS's website that have to serve so many purposes just by their very nature. This site is dedicated to this purpose, so we're able to track that traffic a lot more efficiently. For High Road to develop this site, the cost would be $4,200. Now, looking at the actual ad itself, the ad has been produced in-house by our BTNTV staff and we did so just so that the dollars being allocated here could be deployed to their full potential, actually putting the ad into the target market. So we did develop the ad in-house. And if Mr. Beavers will permit me to share the screen here, I would like to share that with you now. I will add the caveat that we know that Zoom does not always like to share videos as well as we might prefer them to. So I'll do my best to get that pulled up here. All right, everyone should be seeing a black screen now with a play button on. Has everyone seen that correctly? And I will start that for you now.
The places we call work and home are starting to look more and more alike. When you could live and work anywhere, why not make it somewhere extraordinary? Where the air is fresher, your paycheck goes further, and at up to 10 gigabits per second, the internet is some of the fastest in the country. Whether you need to be connected or get reconnected, Bristol is ready. Start your next chapter at BristolIsReady.com.
So of course, the call to action at the conclusion of the ad is directing folks to this new site, BristolIsReady.com. That domain has already been secured. I will attempt to show you a snapshot of what the very rough layout of that site should look like. Of course, this is just a conceptual design of what that main landing page would look like. Of course, very clean, very modern, very image-heavy, but focusing on those content areas that we had discussed previously. Again, we're still working with developing some preliminary content to flesh out these areas. And should this resolution be approved this evening, then High Road will move forward with the actual construction of the site. They have, you know, obviously a very strong starting off point thus far. So it's just a matter of populating that content and being ready to roll out live once the video ad does hit the target markets. And Tim, feel free to pull that final slide back up. So again, the total project budget with the 52,000 for the television ad placements, the 22,500 for the digital ad placements, and the 4,200 for the development of this microsite comes to a total investment of $78,700. There were $49,000 in uncommitted marketing funds remaining from the city. BTS has agreed to partner on the project and fund the balance of the total proposal amount to the tune of $29,700. With that, I will certainly be more than glad to answer any questions that there may be.
I'll start out with a comment. You noticed a lot of numbers in there, impressions, that type of thing. Every single one of those impressions, all of those numbers you just saw are worth something for every single impression. It's a dollar amount that you can attribute to that. I'll also just state also too that this is a pretty good timeline that we're talking about, that we're able to achieve this. John, do you mind telling us what, going through the timeline, exactly when we can start the television ads, when the microsite will be completed, things of that nature?
Certainly, yeah. If everything is approved to move forward, those ads would actually hit those target markets by the end of next week. The target start date would be January 15th so that we would have a solid 13 to 15-week ad flight schedule in those two markets. The microsite, as you saw with sort of the template that's been set up thus far, at this point, it's really just plugging in the content and images and it is ready to go. That, as I mentioned, the domain has been secured. So once that switch is flipped, BristolIsReady.com will be live. And certainly as we move forward, we'll continue to flesh that out with new information. You know, another piece of content that I was assembling today involves sharing available housing opportunities with folks who are looking at the area, the types of housing inventory available, and incentive programs for folks who may want to build new housing here. So that's another platform for us to share that type of information as well.
I would just say, I'm very excited about this whole campaign. To Chad's point, the impressions are so important. And when you're talking about the digital ad placements, the banner ads that will be strategically placed throughout different platforms are just so important. We know that a lot of younger people, well, a lot of people in general these days are not necessarily that they're getting more and more of their news through digital ad placements. So I think that's very exciting. I think the microsite is key to the whole situation and to be able to upload information that's pertinent to those individuals looking to relocate. If you took the dollar amount that's being spent with the number of impressions and the number of reach, I think that you would see that this is a very cost-efficient campaign. And compliments to our staff for putting together the video aspect of it and their collaboration with BTS and with High Roads. I think you've just done a great job and it will be interesting to see how this actually, what results are forthcoming. Good job.
John, could you also, you know, the microsite is a way that we can gauge return on investment. Can you go through ways that we are going to be able to see exactly how this has affected us? Impressions, we think we know where we're going on impressions, what we should generate for impressions, that's one way of doing it as well. Is there any other ways that we're going to be able to gauge improved return on investment?
One thing that we have been discussing with the folks at High Road is sort of what is the best practice in terms of gauging the meaningful engagement with that microsite that people who may be exposed to these ads might have. Certainly, there's the option for contact forms where they can reach out to us directly for more information. That helps us in a number of ways. Ideally, it would be fantastic if in, you know, a few months down the road, I were able to come to you with a story and say, you know, we received a request from information through this form. Maybe they requested just some general information on, let's say, schools or housing, what have you. We send them that information. That individual then ideally makes the decision to relocate to our community. As I showed during one of the previous work sessions, the Finance Department, they track the information about where the new water connections come from by the zip code of their prior address. With all these elements in place, it would be fantastic if we could document the story from the moment that a person first heard about Bristol and what we had to offer through that decision to relocate here and make Bristol their new home. So finding ways to capture user data on their way in to the site through information requests and certainly just through general digital analysis methods that are inherent with the type of search marketing that we plan to engage in in conjunction with this. So you can gain a lot of information about your audience through the digital footprints that they leave and we'll absolutely be monitoring all of that.
I think what's really great about it too is there's a call to action. That's where you get that information. So I think it was very well done, John. I like it a lot.
Well, and another comment that I would make and, John, that I appreciate is that, you know, eight years ago, when I first ran for city council, our website had not been upgraded at that point. And one of the things that we all that were running at that time talked about was that our website had become the front door to our community that people, you know, through their searches and whatnot. I think once they go through that front door, whether it's through our city website or through this microsite, that there is the opportunity for human contact as well. I think it's important to see the digital footprints, but I think that people, when they are oftentimes in searches like this, they want to be able to then take it one step further and have that contact. And so I think building all of that into this microsite is just really great and commended.
So a question, is there data for, life is a journey. So measuring success isn't necessarily counting how many people move here. That's the ultimate goal. But in six months' time or a year's time or whatever, we probably realistic not to expect that and large numbers. But are there, is there data or for how long it takes somebody to decide to make a move? Or also what helps to precipitate that decision or whatever so that we know this is part of that journey? So as well as maybe starting to think about what's our next step?
I think we're in kind of an interesting juncture here where everyone is kind of trying to figure out what the next steps are in terms of what this remote work environment looks like, what quality of life in larger urban areas is going to look like in that six-month timeframe. So a lot of that is us kind of testing to see what kind of messaging folks might respond to. The video ad, you know, it's somewhat fixed in nature, you know, once it goes out there, it's not as nimble as some of the digital ads are. With some of the other things like the social advertising, we can try different approaches and different messages and see perhaps what people respond best to. If people, if there is a huge rush away from some of the West Coast tech capitals, which we are kind of seeing the, not just the beginnings of, it's in process, people are going to be looking where their data needs can be met. So if that's the messaging that really starts to draw the most attention, we probably push harder there. If it is people looking for just general, you know, outdoor quality of life kind of things, you know, they don't have the tech-heavy needs, but they're just looking for a place where they can enjoy life but not have to spend a whole lot of money to do it. Maybe that's the messaging we lean into in sort of the next phases of this campaign. So you're absolutely right. It's a marathon. There's no doubt that when you're looking at shifting our population and the composition of our community in a meaningful way, it's ongoing analysis and figuring out what messaging works. So yeah, it's going to be a game where we're continually chasing and improving and finding what people are connecting with.
And I assume we're in a very much probably in a paradigm shift. So what might have taken X amount of time for people to make decisions in the past because of the pandemic, people may be making decisions more quickly than they did in the past because they have more opportunity now or because they just don't see a future where they're living in a highly urban environment or something. So anyway, it'll be very interesting.
You know, with the banner ads, as you mentioned, John, that's a great opportunity. You know, we have heard so much about 5 gig, 10 gig, you know, 10 gigs built off of 100 gig spine. And we've talked a lot about that and we, because we have talked about so much, understand that. Even people that live in other areas that want that high-speed connectivity and they know that it's there. A lot of people do know what 10 gig means. Some may not absolutely, you know, understand its truest value. But we have the fastest, we have comparable fastest connectivity in the nation. There is no community in this nation that has faster connectivity than we do or the capability of even faster connectivity. And so I'm just, I can't tell you how excited I am. You know, six or seven years ago, Chattanooga rolled out their whole platform of the gigabit infrastructure. And the difference between Chattanooga and us is that they received a huge grant for marketing that we did not receive. And so I think it's great that we are taking advantage of this at this point. And I think we see two great opportunities tonight where we have provided grants to ourselves more or less. One through Believe in Bristol and one through BTS and this collaboration. So good job.
I think that's a very important point that it's one thing to tell the story about what our technology capabilities are to the world. It's another matter to get everyone here locally on the same page and to really understand what an asset we have. And hopefully, this compilation of materials in this campaign will help us, you know, kind of unify around a single message and a single story just so that it's amplified and that it does reach the ears that it needs to hear. That's absolutely a critical component of this as well.
John, are y'all going to run this on BTEA and the BTS channel?
We can. With the licensing that we do, typically, we're not engaged in this level of television advertising. So there are some licensing issues with, you know, the music that we use and the voices that we use that we don't typically run into just because we're not typically at this scale. But with the licensing approach that we took with this, we would be eligible to use it. It would still be considered within the It would still be considered within the same, the same general market, even as those larger metros that we're in. So we are covered to use it for local distribution as well.
Good. Anything else from anyone? Hearing none, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve resolution 20 dash four.
Second.
Okay, would any member of council like to discuss this resolution any further? Hearing none, I believe we're ready for vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Great job. Next we have resolution 21 dash 17. Resolution awarding a bid for relocation of Island Road Northeast. Mr. Sora?
Uh, yes, Mayor, as I mentioned earlier in tonight's meeting, resolution 21 17 and 21 19 were late additions to our agenda due to the timing of authorization from Tennessee Department of Transportation. To, to provide some background to this issue, in August of 2018, council approved resolution 1877, which authorized our industrial development board to enter into a development agreement with Centerpoint LLC to support the advancement of a commercial development known as Centerpoint 74 in the exit 74 area. An element of that agreement required the city to seek grant funding from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the relocation of a portion of Island Road. The grant application was successful and as part of that grant application, the city is required to administer the relocation project. On December 14th, bids for the, for the, for the reconstruction of Island Road were opened. Baker Construction Services of Love City, Tennessee submitted the low bid in the amount of $964,404.10. Once, once a bid on a project where T-DOT funding is, is linked to it, then once the bids are open, the bids have to be formally then sent to T-DOT and they have to approve the bid of the award before the city can take action. So we've, we've just received notification that they have approved the bid award and subsequently wanted to, rather than delay the project to our next business meeting, go ahead and add this as a business item tonight. As such, I will be required, due to the, the, the late nature of the addition, I will be required to read the resolution. And if it's appropriate at this point, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and do that.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
All right. Resolution 21 17 is a resolution awarding a bid for the relocation of Island Road Northeast. Whereas the city of Bristol issued invitation for bids for the relocation of Island Road Northeast approximately 470 feet to improve safety and better serve the Centerpoint 74 development. And whereas the project will be partially funded by a grant from Tennessee Department of Transportation Interstate Access Program. And whereas the bids were opened on December 14th, 2020 with Baker Construction Services Inc. of Love City, Tennessee submitting the lowest responsive bid in the amount of $964,404.10. And whereas T-DOT grant funding will pay for 50% of the estimated construction cost of the project or 482,202.05 with the city being responsible for the remaining 50% of the estimated construction costs of the project, which will be reimbursed by the developer of Centerpoint 72, excuse me, Centerpoint 74 pursuant to a reimbursement agreement. And whereas T-DOT has, has concurred in the finding that Baker Construction Services Inc. has submitted the lowest responsive bid. And whereas the city manager recommends that the bid of Baker's Construction Services Inc. be accepted. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Bristol, Tennessee that the recommendation of the city manager is accepted and award is hereby made to Baker's Construction Services Inc. of Love City, Tennessee in strict accordance with bid percent, pursuant to bid reference to 20040, whereupon the mayor declared the resolution adopted, affixed a signature and a date thereto, and directed the same to be recorded. As indicated in the, in the, in the resolution, we do have also a reimbursement agreement with Centerpoint LLC that we will, we will, will, will pay initially pay the, the monthly invoices from the contractor and then subsequently be reimbursed by both T-DOT and the developer for those costs.
Okay. Does any member of council have any questions for staff? Hearing none, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve action on resolution number 21 dash 17. Move approval.
A second. Would any member of council like to have any further discussion on resolution 21 dash 17? Hearing none, I believe we're ready to vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Next we have resolution 21 dash 18, approving an engineering services agreement for the relocation of Island Road Northeast. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, this is a companion resolution associated with the same relocation of Island Road Northeast project. As, as councils aware, anytime T-DOT funds are, are associated with a project, there is a requirement for third party inspection services to be obtained to, to provide construction inspection services and also invoicing and, and all of the administrative side of, of that construction project. They, we are, we are to select an inspection services agreement, we are select from engineering firms that are approved by T-DOT. Locally, Mattern and Craig is one of those firms that is approved and one that, that the city has had a relationship in past projects and they have performed admirably. So resolution 21 18 formally approves this engineering service agreement with Mattern and Craig of Johnson City, Tennessee in the amount of $236,600. As with resolution 21 17, this cost is, is split on an equal basis with T-DOT and then the city fronting the balance of that cost for the developer and the developer reimbursing the city for those costs. As with resolution 20 17, I will need to, to read aloud resolution 21 18. And if it's okay to proceed with that, I will, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Resolution number 21 18, a resolution approving an engineering services agreement for the relocation of Island Road Northeast. Whereas the city of Bristol requested proposals for construction engineering inspection services connected to the relocation of Island Road Northeast approximately 470 feet to improve safety and better serve the Centerfor, Centerpoint 74 development. And whereas the project will be partially funded by a grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation's Interstate Access Program. And whereas staff reviewed the proposals and determined that Mattern and Craig, Inc. of Johnson City, Tennessee was the most qualified firm to perform the construction engineering inspection services at a cost of $236,000. And whereas T-DOT grant funding will pay 50% of the estimated construction cost of the project or $118,000 with the city being responsible for the remaining 50% of the construction engineering inspecting, inspection services, which will be reimbursed by the developer of Centerpoint 74 pursuant to the reimbursement agreement. And whereas the city manager recommends that the attached engineering services agreement for construction engineering inspection services with Mattern and Craig of Johnson City, Tennessee be approved, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Bristol, Tennessee that the recommendation to city manager is accepted and attached, and the attached engineering services agreement for construction engineering inspection services with Mattern and Craig of Johnson City, Tennessee is hereby approved, whereupon the mayor declared the resolution adopted, affixed a signature and date thereto, and directed the same to be recorded.
Okay. Any member of council have a question for staff? Hearing none, is there a motion to take action on this item? Motion to approve resolution 21 18?
Second.
Any member of council like to discuss this resolution any further? Hearing none, Tara, I believe we're ready to vote. Please call the roll.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Okay. This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we first had the minutes of December 1st, 2020 city council meeting. They have the minutes of the 2015, excuse me, the, the December 15th, 2020 city council work session. We have resolution 21 dash five awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk fuel. We have resolution 21 dash six awarding a bid for final clarifier number four, replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. We have resolution 21 dash seven awarding a bid for purchase of tandem dump truck. Resolution 21 dash eight awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk concrete products. Resolution 21 dash nine awarding a bid for the purchase of towable, of a towable air compressor. Resolution 21 dash 10 authorizing the purchase of in-car video systems with body cameras. Resolution 21 dash 11 authorizing the amendment of an agreement related to the demolition landfill. And resolution 21 dash 12 approving the extension of emergency paid sick leave act benefits to employees of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. Resolution 21 dash 13 adopting a revised written records policy for the city of Bristol, Tennessee. Resolution 21 dash 14 adopting amended and restated rules and procedures of city council. Resolution 21 dash 15 authorizing entry into an amendment of an MOU related to, or a memorandum of understanding related to school resource officers. And resolution 21 dash 16 approving a grant agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for Urban Operating Assistant Grants Fund.
Thank you. Would any member of council like any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the items included in the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tara, please call the roll.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Next, as I often refer to the best part of our city council meeting, and that's hearing their Board of Education liaison report by Ms. Dr. Tudor.
Thank you so much. It's great to see you all. I, I hold out for just that comment, Mayor. I appreciate that. It's the best thing anybody says to me all day long. So I'd like to start by thanking you all for your support of the amendment for the SRO, the, the opportunity to provide SROs for our elementary schools. The flexibility that the amendment allows for has expedited getting some, some of those SROs in our buildings a little bit sooner than anticipated. So thank you for your support of that amendment. And I'd like to also thank Chief Wade in Major Eads and certainly Mr. Sora for their support in helping to navigate that process and get those folks in place for us. Pleased to let you all know that we've received a donation from Mr. Jeff Tickle, who is supporting some much needed improvements in our CTE program. And so we've started those just recently. We've been able to establish plans for a school store that will be, it's been, actually the design of it was created by students and executing, actually running the store will be run by students and it will be students selling things that students make through our CTE program. So that's a pretty exciting adventure that the donation will also allow us to upgrade some of our facilities in terms of redoing some flooring in our shop areas and updating paint and just making it a nicer facility for our shop areas. And then significant dollars spent on new equipment to bring our programming up to, up to current standards, certainly. So it's a great investment and we appreciate that donation from Mr. Tickle. I'm also excited to say that beginning next fall, we are adding a CNA certified nurse assistant program for our students that in partnership with Ballad. So we'll be able to expedite allowing students to take high school courses that will work toward that certification. And in partnership with Ballad, those students will have an opportunity to sort of be guaranteed an interview and a spot at job placement should they qualify for that by the time they're out of high school. So that really those are students who are interested in the healthcare field, what can get a jump on that. And that, that's been a hurdle we've had to overcome in terms of age and requirements and those sorts of things. So we appreciate the partnership with Ballad to provide that, those opportunities for our students. And then finally, finally, just a COVID update for you all. Our students will return and start second semester tomorrow and they're actually all remote for almost two weeks. It'll be about eight instructional days, but our students will, those who've chosen in person will return to in-person instruction on January 19th. And so it's these first two weeks of the semester will be all remote. And then after that, we'll return to in-person, just trying to get over the hurdle of whatever the holiday may bring in terms of spread of the virus. We, I'm sure you've heard that President Trump had signed the stimulus package last week. We will be recipients of additional funds related to that stimulus package. We don't know exactly how much yet. We just, we know that there's a sizable amount of funds that will be coming to our district that will support learning loss for our students. And so we're in the very preliminary stages of planning how we can use those funds and what we intend to do for that. So we, we hope to have some very innovative ways of supporting our students in the recovery from lost instruction and learning COVID. We, at this point, the last communication I've had in terms of vaccine for our staff is the end of January. We're in phase one B, I believe, is what our, our teachers are in. And so we'll be coordinating efforts with the health department to ensure that our, our staff have access to that as quickly as possible. And as soon as that information's available, we'll certainly notify our folks. But we do have some of our school nurses who have received the vaccine. And so when students return in person, we know that at least our healthcare providers that are having direct contact with our students have been vaccinated, those that have chosen to do so. Meal distribution for January began tonight, began this, this afternoon. It's going to be on Tuesdays and Thursdays for the next couple of weeks. And I, I'm reiterating that because our school nutrition director, Jennifer Burleson, has been very creative in not just providing a typical school lunch kind of environment, but they are actually distributing type foods, half gallons of milk, a variety of resources that a family can use to actually create a family meal as opposed to just individual à la carte items that you might find on a traditional lunch tray. And so those distributions happen on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And they're at Anderson, Avoca, Fairmount Dance, two days a week and enough food to cover for the whole week. So we just want to get that message out and encourage our families to take advantage of that wonderful opportunity. It's free to everyone ages zero to 18. So anyone can come by and pick up those meals. And then finally, I'd like to again, thank you for your support in passing the resolution that requested a, supported a moratorium on state standardized testing. You may have also recently heard that Governor Lee has asked for and called a special legislative session on January 19th with a focus primarily on education. And the five areas that he will focus that legislative session on are learning loss, funding, accountability, which is the resolution you passed, literacy and teacher pay. And so I appreciate, we, we did send that resolution as well as the one approved by the county commission and our school board. We sent that on to representatives at the state level. And so I think the collective voice of those resolutions really sent a message along with others across the state. So I appreciate your support for that. And I'm, I feel confident that we'll have some, some support at the state level for, for those things, for the hurdles that our educators and our students have had to overcome in this challenging year. So thank you again for that support. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have, if you have any.
Any questions from anyone? Okay. With Dr. Tudor, we certainly appreciate all that you guys do and it's always great hearing, hearing your updates.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to city managers' report. He fell asleep.
He's muted again. I'm going to get a tee shirt.
He's going to stay after class.
The, I, I do, I do have, I have a couple of, of dates that, for meetings that I'd like for city council to, to ensure they have on their calendar. The first is the Networks Board of Directors meeting. And I know some of you serve on that board and some of you don't, but it, but I know all of you have a keen interest in. But it, uh, but I know all of you have a keen interest in, uh, in the business of that board. And especially the conversation around regionalism and so forth, and, and how that, how that moves or progresses. Uh, in, in the new year. Their meeting is, the meeting date is different than, uh, it's typically the second Wednesday. This, this month is going to be the third Wednesday, uh, January the 20th at A, at 8:00 AM. I have sent each of you the electronic invitation that will provide you access to that meeting. And I, I hope, uh, I hope, uh, I hope you can all five in, uh, uh, participate in that meeting and, and, and be, be briefed as to the discussions. That are ongoing regarding regionalism. Also, I'd like to talk about our city council work session on Tuesday, January 26th, that will commence at 9:00 AM. As councils aware of what we have evolved into in, in, in recent years. Is that becomes our kickoff session, uh, for our, our budget preparation. That, that's, that's essentially will, will take us through, uh, through the middle of June. But that session, it's one that, that I feel is very important with city council. We, we typically talk about the family finances during that meeting. We try to make, uh, make sure that you all are as informed as we are, uh, regarding. Everything that needs to come together to make the fiscal 22 budget, uh, a sound financial planning document. As, as you're aware, 2021 is a reappraisal year, uh, for the city of Bristol and Sullivan County. Property assessor Donna Whitaker will be present, uh, or will be at our meeting. And, and we'll talk about the reappraisal process, impacts of TIFs. And then, and then impacts of, of four commercial properties that have appealed their, their property. Uh, appraised value and, and what impact that might, uh, that might have on us going forward. And the time in which we might, uh, expect some decisions regarding that. Certainly that is impactful as we go into our budget preparation, uh, season. We will also have a representative from hospitality Tennessee that will, uh, engage with council regarding the various. Formats in which a CBB, uh, can operate and, and how they operate in, in other communities. And the benefit, the pluses and minuses of the different models that are out there, including the one we presently have. What I think we, we, and then in addition, we'll look at financial modeling, we'll, we'll historical revenues. Historical expenditures, we'll talk about capital improvement projects. We, you know, this. Uh, I, I've got to really applaud this, this city council, and you've been very progressive in terms of crafting a forward direction for this community. For the first time in the, in this community's history, last summer, this city council approved a comprehensive plan. That will guide the direction and the decisions of this council, the direction of this city for the next 20 years. I consider that a 35, 35,000 foot level, uh, view. We have a host of other studies that we have done on various elements that support that comprehensive plan. That, that I would say give a 5,000 foot, uh, view of, of each of those initiatives. And they, they, they all come with, with some element of, of financial impact. So this is a day in which we need to have those, to get those decisions. Look at the family finances and talk about which of those elements we feel like, um, are, are appropriate to advance. In the initial stages of this. So that brings us to where do we have this meeting? Now, um, Governor Lee, um, in his executive order, I think it was 71. Provided, uh, an opportunity for us to continue to meet electronically through February 27th. We do have Slater Center, uh, as an opportunity to meet in person if you want to do that. And you also have the opportunity to meet in a hybrid form. So, you know, I think with that, I, I would like for city council to give staff some direction as to. Uh, the format that you would like to have that meeting, uh, so we can begin to, to, to make the necessary notifications to the public. So with that, with that, Mayor, if you all, if y'all could give us some feedback, uh, or just have a general discussion. On, we, we know the meetings Tuesday, the 26th, we know it starts at nine o'clock. Where do you want to have it?
So I can start, I'll jump in. Um, but first off, I think the, these kind of work sessions do, do better when we're in person. However, we haven't done it in person, spread out as much as probably we would be in Slater Gym, which makes it a little bit difficult. But personally, um, our daughter is expecting her first baby. And we will either be with her at that time or be, will be planning to go pretty quickly. And we personally, I think I need to not, I need to really limit what I'm exposed to so that. We're able to make that visit and trip. So personally, I prefer joining it virtually. Whether it's a hybrid or whether it's all online.
I would also prefer virtually as well.
I would be available to do it live.
I would be available to be live as well. Being socially distanced, I, I would. And, and I can appreciate Margaret's perspective. We're expecting another grandchild in April and would be anxious to go as well and to be there. But I will be here. And so if, if being in person is an option socially distance. I'm available.
Does this sound like you would like to have a hybrid meeting? Is that, is that what I'm hearing or, or, I mean, just, uh?
I think that's what you're hearing.
Yeah, I think that.
Hybrid.
Yes.
All right. We'll, we'll go ahead and, and proceed with that. And, and those of you who, who can attend, if you're comfortable, uh, attending. Then we'll have that, uh, that type of, of, of environment set up. We'll also have an electronic environment that will allow, um, that will allow others to participate electronically. So, all right, thank you. Uh, the next item that I want to talk to you about, it's, uh, as, as council is aware. Last fall, the construction, uh, uh, contract for the reconstruction of East Cedar Street was awarded to Baker Construction. Services and the project, and, and those of you who have been in that area know that, that contractor has been working in the S-curve area around King College. That project now is about to start in earnest. Um, yesterday, our community relations department sent out over 4,000.
Lost audio.
I lost it. Am I back?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Bills froze up.
Okay, am I?
Bill.
You're good.
All right, let me, let, let, let me, let me try to continue then. Yesterday, our community relations department, uh, sent about 4,000 cards, uh, to. The residents in the Fairmount area, as well as all the residential subdivisions to the state line. Uh, along, uh, uh, to the extent of Old Jonesboro Road. So those of you who live in that area, probably tomorrow, uh, or Thursday, you will receive in this card. But it, it talks about the detour and the traffic plan for the next four months in that area. And, uh, it, we've had extensive meetings, staff has had extensive meetings with the contractor. To try to develop a plan that number one, works very safely for not only the contractor, but the motoring public. But also expedites the, uh, the inconvenience to the public. And the best solution, there's, um, those of you who, who, who've been in the area or, or who've talked with us about this construction project. Know that, that a significant portion of this area between the intersection of East Cedar Street and King College Road. Uh, all the way back to the hill at the entrance to King College will have, um, depending on where you are in that road, anywhere between three to four feet of field. This really does not lend itself to a safe traveling lane for the motoring public. So after much discussion with the contractor, uh, it's been determined that the best thing to do is simply to close that road to through traffic. Now, uh, traffic will be maintained or, or access will be maintained to those individuals who live. On the, who live in that area, and that is the only access to their property. But, uh, this will probably be for a period of four months where, where the travel route from. Uh, the intersection of East Cedar and King College Road, all the way back to, to Florida Avenue. Uh, will, will not allow through traffic, uh, in, into the, into that work zone. We feel like, uh, while that, while that will, area should take about four months, it may actually reduce. Uh, the construction time by a similar amount. Now, that remains to be seen, weather always has an impact. Uh, and, and field conditions, once the, once the construction actually gets, um. Gets moving forward in that area will dictate the timeline. But we certainly wanted to make council aware of this. We want to make the public aware of this. Uh, news releases are going out in the morning, uh, and we will be talking about this on all of our, all of our social platforms. Once that is completed, when you look at the, the length of that project. Uh, almost half of that project will, will have been reconstructed. That is significant in trying to expedite. The, the construction timeline in this project. As we said early on, this project will be like a bad root canal. And, and for this four months, that's exactly what this is going to be. But at the end of the day, we will have a, 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 a very, very attractive roadway through there. We'll also be able to open up this, um, this project as a completed section. Uh, of the, of the roadway improvement effort, uh, once this is completed. And then, and then move that construction on, on further west, uh, all the way to Fitz Street. From a traffic flow standpoint, as you're aware, traffic, uh, now that's on King College Road. At that intersection with East Cedar Street, the east turning movement there must stop. We will shift that to a yield, uh, and that will allow traffic to free, to free flow through that area, uh, to the extent, as to the extent as possible. So we wanted to give you a heads up on that. Like I said, cards, uh, were sent to everyone residing in that area yesterday. And they should receive them sometime Wednesday or Thursday. Are there questions regarding that? Okay, hearing none, uh, Mayor, that completes my report.
Okay, we'll move on to city council comments.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'll, uh, if, if it's okay, I'll jump in there because I was gonna, I was gonna, uh, just compliment the city staff on everything. Uh, that's been happening in that King College area in that S curve and, and, um. There is a lot of moving parts and dirt and all that kind of thing happening. That's in my district. And so I was gonna compliment you, but now the root canal really starts, I guess. But, uh, no, I'm very confident that we'll get through that time period. If it shortens our, our, uh. Construction period, that'll be great. I, I want to first off apologize to my internet connection. I don't know if I got through the, uh, the pledge or not. If you guys heard that or what, but I completely lost internet connection, had to go to. Different device. And I think everything's been good so far. From then, uh, Bristol, Tennessee schools, the nursing program is huge. Just in, I, I served on the, uh, Bristol Regional. Medical Center Board for five years, maybe six years even. And we were always short somewhere around 50 to 100 nurses. On any given board meeting that we had, we met monthly. So that is huge. And hopefully it's a stepping stone, uh, for those CNA, uh, uh, folks to go into, uh. You know, the nursing, the full-time nursing, into a, a, a full nursing degree, which is what we need. It's a wide open field. The, the third thing I wanted to mention, I just wanted to ask if, if we may, and. I know we've got our, uh, uh, public relations department, um, probably in overtime right now, trying to get commercials out. And I don't think right now in the next couple of three months is an appropriate time. But I really think we should look at maybe in the next, uh, you know, six months. Down the road that we look at Bristol, Tennessee essential services and the BTN, uh, BTN network. See how we can collaborate, see where we're overlapping, do an analysis of viewership. And see how we may become more efficient by using both platforms. Should we consolidate into one platform? Both have advantages and I'll be the first to admit, I don't know. But I think that's something we should maybe look at when we get, uh, maybe after the first, I mean, maybe after. You know, in, into May-June time period or something like that, or whatever, whatever time period is appropriate. Uh, so if we can make note of that, um, the other thing I wanted to mention that. That we now all are aware of and have been, um, experiencing is the, um. Is a smell that's coming from the landfill, uh, Bristol, Virginia landfill area. Uh, I, I really wanted to get something out in public that, that we all know about. I, I, I have talked with, um, Randy Eads or the city manager, uh, for Bristol, Virginia, as well as. Uh, council members. It, it looks as though they are, in simplicity's sake, they are replacing gas lines. There could be some groundwater contaminant, uh, I'm sorry, uh, condensate lines. Enter, in and around the groundwater outside the landfill could be a problem as well. And so, you know, one of the things that I wanted to make sure is, is that our citizens know that we do know what's going on. There is a website, uh, excuse me, there's a Facebook and it's called Bristol City, Virginia, Tennessee Air Pollution Community Page. And I, I really think that we should all, uh, kind of follow that as closely as we can. Randy Eads has been really good about posting exactly, um, what's going on in full disclosure all the way around that. Um, and we are very fortunate that Bill Sora, uh, has experience, um, in utilities, uh. In both cities, Bristol, Tennessee, most recently, prior to his city manager position, and then also, uh, in Bristol, Virginia. After a little bit of correspondence, I thought he gave a really good, uh, explanation. Uh, as to kind of process, and I, I know nothing's in stone, but. Bill, if, if you don't mind, if you could just kind of go through what you think may move forward. Within that process of the landfill in Bristol, Virginia.
Okay. Well, certainly I can't speak to the landfill issue itself because I'm not, I'm not, uh, cognizant of what's transpiring there. What I can speak to is, is how state environmental agencies look at these types of projects. Uh, I know, uh, you know, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. Once they're made aware of a concern, will investigate the concern. And they will require the owner, whether that be, the owner be public or private. To, to, if they don't have the capabilities in-house to characterize the nature of the problem. Then they'll require them to get a third party, typically an engineering services firm, to do this. And fully characterize, uh, is, is there an issue there? And if there is, what's the nature, the, the, what's the extent of that problem? Uh, and then develop a plan for remediation. This is all done at the cost of the owner, again, be it, be it public or private. But the, any, i- if, you know, once a problem is, is noted, uh, is determined. Then there needs to, then there would be a remediation plan. Uh, I know in, from a TDEC standpoint, TDEC would, uh, would have to approve the remediation plan. And then would ensure that this followed through. So that's typically how those types of regulatory oversight, my state environmental agency. Would occur in, would occur in Tennessee. Uh, VDQ, uh, I think is involved in this, and I'm sure they operate, uh, very, very similar. In terms of evaluating, uh, environmental issues, the, is, is there a concern? Is there a truly a concern there? What's the, uh, what's the extent of that concern? And, and what's the strategy to remediate that issue?
Well, in, in my conversation with Randy Eads, he has also assured me that it's a high priority. For them to get this straightened out as soon as possible. And, uh, I know that we all will be, uh, our administrative staff within the city, as well as our council members will be. Keeping a close eye on this and, and hopefully be, hoping that this comes to a conclusion as soon as possible. And I'll just finish by saying Happy New Year, 2021. Let's hope, oh well, let me say, 2021 is gonna be great. Thanks. Anyone else?
Okay, I can, um, just add to that. I, um, also share concerns and have followed in, um, the. Facebook page, et cetera, but also just wanted to, um, thank those citizens and remind our citizens that we're all in this together. And, uh, when there are problems, it is important to let us know because, uh. Bristol covers a lot of territory and we don't always know, um, what different issues are in different parts of our community. So appreciate the folks who are, um, who came forward and who identified problems. So appreciate that. And, um, I wanted to, again, also thank our staff and, um, in all departments. departments. And I think I'm not alone in feeling like and seeing like from our agendas that we really haven't slowed down with pandemic, that our staff has been producing and busy and doing as much as they do during our regular times. And I'm sure that's not without some extra effort, a lot of extra effort on some folks to keep things going. So really appreciate that and also encourage us all. And thanks, Chad, for pushing that out a little bit for when we might get to a project. Also, wanted to do a shout out to our essential workers, and particularly our healthcare workers who have been working, some of them probably almost 24/7 since March, really hard, and our health department folks. And now we're I'm really excited that we have a vaccine. And but our health, health folks have to organize that and give those vaccines. So just another another load for them and another reason for us to really appreciate them. And then my last thing, just announcement is that our Martin Luther King Committee, that started with the YWCA and Train Station Board several years ago, has been busy meeting since maybe started in September. Anyway, this year, we have more partners, more activities than we've had in non COVID times. So check out, YWCA has a lot of things listed. They've got service projects that are recognizing our essential workers, Birthplace of Country Music, this through several months has several projects. Rivers Way has done walking challenges that they started months ago, and they have a Martin Luther King walking challenge. It was 50 miles from Selma to Montgomery. So you can sign up for that challenge, or they walk 12 miles a day, which is more, I'm hoping I can do 12 miles in the whole month of January for walking. Anyway, but pretty nice way to tie things in. And King University will have a panel. They've been their faith and culture have been having a program on Monday night on the holiday. And we our program has been at two o'clock on Monday afternoon. We weren't sure we were going to do that, but we are. It will be virtual and be streamed. And we're excited to put that together with music and readings and activities that we hope lots of folks will be called to join. So thank you very much. Oh, and I forgot, a regional food, we partnered with Second Harvest Food Bank. They are raising money for a focus on Dr. King and his thoughts on poverty and hoping to have a press conference at 10 o'clock on the 18th and have our mayors join in on that press conference, which is supposed to be in person with following all the guidelines with the number of people present, etc. So, thank you.
I'll go next. Um, you know, we we've been in this COVID situation for the better part of nine plus months, and we've made it this far. We've lost some along the way, unfortunately, and our hearts and prayers go out to those. And I know there's been some real loss in the past few days. So I'd just like to reach out to those who have experienced this loss. But to say we've we've come this far, we're not that far away from being able to to move on forward with the vaccines coming into play. And it's so important, it's more important now more than ever that that we still practice those the the three points of social distancing, wearing our mask, washing our hands, and, you know, let's let's walk on walk on out of this as best we can with the vaccine and with with just support for one another. I think it's great that the schools will have options to either be virtual or in the classroom. We know that our children need to be in school because of food fragility, as Dr. Tudor addressed, as well as other issues. And kudos to the schools for making sure that our children and their families have the food that they need in the coming days. I'd like to encourage everyone to support small businesses. I think that what we're doing through Believe in Bristol is just exceptional. We see that there is a need, and we're willing to to reach into our funds to help on that level. But I hope that as we go into this work session and and take a look at the family finances, that we take a good look at our compensation plan, and that we make the next steps possible to be sure that our family members of the city are that their salaries and employment compensation is brought in line. And again, I'd like to ask everyone to remember, if you would, the nonprofits in our area. We are going to come through COVID, and we want our nonprofits, those that provide direct services, food, healthcare to our population. But we also want to be sure that our arts are intact when we come through this. The BCM, the Paramount, Believe in Bristol as well, they're all in need of continued funding. And then finally, I'd like to say how much I appreciate all of our staff. Y'all make being on council a pleasure. We're very well educated and appreciate everything. And congratulations to Tara Music and the Finance Department for the clean audit and all of the awards and accolades that they deserve in in supporting our city's finances. Thank you. Good job, Tara.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, with all the actions we've taken tonight, you know, we continue, you know, going the positive direction. And just so many so many good things are going to happen for us, I feel, in the very near future. You know, there is light at the end of that tunnel from from the relief of the pandemic. That light is getting a little bit brighter, but we still have a long way to go. We still have to be very cautious, as Ms. Powers said. You know, we do the staff we have, and we've said time and time and again, that, you know, we'll put them up against anyone across the country. And sincerely mean that, that, you know, from the bottom of heart, I really appreciate all the hard work and effort that everyone puts day in, day out with the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And Chad, to to the point of the issue over in the Fairmount section related to what we think is the landfill. I have been in communication for a little over a week. I was requested to join that that Facebook site and have been in communication with a lot of folks there. And, you know, they are hurting, you know, they're they're very concerned. And I've tried to assure them that this city, this council, all of us are very concerned about their well being, and that we'll do everything that we can possibly do to help remediate that as much as we can. So yeah, it is very concerning for them. And, you know, the light of that tunnel for them is a little bit dim right now, but it will get fixed. With that, I'll say we're adjourned for this evening.